As far as city council, public hearing will now be called to order. Madam Clerk.
Counselors Kadim?
Here.
Dion?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
La Liberty LeBeau?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Peckham?
Here.
Pelletier?
Here.
Pereira?
Here.
President Ponte?
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting, law or any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed to acknowledge and permissible. First item on our agenda this evening is our public hearing. In accordance with our city charter, section 64A of the city charter, this meeting is open to the public to hear any persons interested and wishing to be heard on the proposed fiscal 2021 municipal budget. Madam Clerk obviously has the opportunity to read any public records, I'm sorry, any citizens' input that has been sent to her for the public hearings. There's nobody in the public that I see here besides department heads who is looking to speak during a public hearing, but I will call it anyway. Calling all opponents who are wishing to speak on the budget, calling all opponents. Hearing none, calling all proponents wishing to speak, calling all proponents. Hearing none, is there a motion to close?
Motion to close.
Motion to close. The public hearing has been made by Councilor Lee, seconded by Councilor Peckham. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. It is 5:35. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn has been made by Councilor Pereira, seconded by Councilor Dion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. 5:35, committee on finance will now be called to order. Madam Clerk.
Counselors Kadim?
Here.
Dion?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
La Liberty LeBeau?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Peckham?
Here.
Pelletier?
Here.
Pereira?
Here.
And President Ponte?
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting, law or any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed to acknowledge and permissible. First item on our agenda this evening is citizens' input. Madam Clerk.
Good afternoon, Council President and members of the city council. Before you today are the start of budget deliberations for the FY 2020. I believe Council President Ponte set up a good tempo for the meeting when he said we're going to scrub at every dollar we can find, and I agree with the Council President when he stated that not every possible dollar was quote-unquote "scrubbed at" when this budget was presented. I believe the council and the city needs to have a clear vision. Councilor Kadim said it perfectly when he discussed the council wanted to fund projects, then vote against mechanisms to actually fund said projects. In the short term, we need to make investments into our community. I 100% agree with John Perry that this city needs to invest in a transfer station which can be further transformed into a gasification plant. This city will be much better prepared in the future if we do so. We can cut down on the trash costs and open our city to the region and bring in much-needed revenue into our city. The only way this is possible is if the council and the administration supports a mechanism to fund such an endeavor. Lastly, I'm going to comment at every single meeting on ways we can put, cut out some costs. At tonight's meeting, let's discuss the fuel. Attached to the citizens' input are fuel logs which wrap into the thousands in price. I believe there has been a misuse of city fuel which we could look into auditing and cutting down on. Respectfully submitted, Colin Dias.
Thank you. Any further citizens' input, Madam Clerk?
No, Mr. President.
There are no citizens' input before us tonight. Next item on our agenda is a discussion on the fiscal '21 municipal budget, referred to council on August 11th. We have a little bit of an agenda that we've prepared over the next couple of nights for discussion purposes. First is going to be our general fund and reserve, general government financial services, community services. Mrs. Sahadi, you don't have an additional presentation, do you?
No, Council. With the fact that we now have TVs available for the public to also see, what I did was summarize the departments that are on this evening for this evening's presentation or questions, as well as tomorrow and Wednesday.
Fair enough. I'm going to call our Vice President up. I want to speak specifically on a couple items. Council Vice President.
Hi, Mrs. Sahadi.
Council President?
I wanted to just speak first and kind of get it out of the way, if I may, before my colleagues have an opportunity to speak with what's before us tonight. And I don't want to crush the debate or any concerns councilors may have regarding this budget, the municipal budget that's before us here tonight. I'd like to ask, if I may, and I know there's no specific department heads per se that need to be here for this, I'd like to make a motion at this time to waive the current rules that I set forth with respect to insurance, which is in item 332.
Motion to waive the rules.
On page 333 on our budget. So I'd like to make a motion now to waive the rules so we can speak on employer group insurance.
Motion made by?
Second.
Council Ponte, seconded by Councilor Lee, all in favor?
Aye.
Roll call.
Roll call? Roll call?
May I say something? The only reason I'm asking for roll call is because I agree that health insurance is a hot item. However, if we're going to talk about that, that's going to take a while, and I feel bad for the other department heads that are here that have worked all day and that now they're here. If we go in rotation of the way it was, when healthcare comes up, it just comes up. I just think that this will turn into a lengthy debate, and I have many questions on that as well. That's my only reason.
Thank you, Council. Council President?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. The reason I'm doing this, it was just kind of late in the afternoon that I kind of was following through on a lot of these insurance items. The reason for it is we've got three nights scheduled of department heads here, tonight, tomorrow, and Wednesday. I haven't done any type of polling with councilors specifically, but quite frankly, my position is I would assume, assume is the word, that this budget is most likely dead on arrival with the aspects that we are not funding public safety at 100%. We have department heads who have been working all day who are here, and a conversation may or may not have hap, may or may not happen right now that I'm prepared to make a motion that we send this back to the administration. And there's a certain possibility that the meetings for the rest of the week could be canceled unless councilors find it necessary to discuss a budget that has less money for public safety and a structural deficit giving the schools $3.5 million out of stabilization. So I think if we have this very brief discussion on health insurance now, we might alleviate a lot of concerns down the road. So with that, I yield.
Motion to?
On the roll call?
On the motion, Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
La Liberty LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
No.
President Ponte?
Yes. Mrs. Sahadi, in our budget this year, you have conservatively, or not so conservatively, I don't know, allocated a transfer to the employer trust fund of $40,500,000 to the employer trust fund. And I know that you were, and we haven't connected yet on the phone, which I know we played phone tag a little bit today. I am concerned on a couple of things with respect to this budget, one being the fact that a budget's being presented to us right now without funding our police and our fire departments, two critical departments which the mayor just submitted to us through a poll that he did of being the most important issue facing however many people were in fact polled for that. In the presentation that you gave us last week, on page 27, there's 12 police officer positions totaling 672,03, and in fire, there's 13 positions at 742,368, two departments that we've, that this administration has decided to remove these positions that are vacant, essentially not giving them level service, correct, but not funding those open positions of both those departments, right?
That is correct, Council President. And as you know, we continue to work with each of the departments on a daily basis, and we continue to look at all of the areas that we can with regard to even the movement of funding from one department to another. And quite frankly, just today, we were able to work with the library as well as one other department, the MIS department, and we were able to put one patrol position back into the budget by removing a library individual who has recently resigned, so resigned subsequent to when the budget was initially put together for this council. So we continue to work to fill those positions that are not currently funded in the budget. We're continuing to be hopeful that some of the CARES money will be available. We certainly have through the time that we set the recap, which is in November, to send down additional appropriations, which would always be our intent. But as of right now, we do have positions in a number of departments in addition to public safety that are currently not funded.
Okay. And I acknowledge that. We want to try to be as lean as possible, specifically go in at the next year. Here's where my concerns are. I'll cut right to the chase. How much money are we essentially shorting or not funding public safety? Is the total amount the two items, which is 670,000 plus 742 for the positions equalling about $1.4 million for public safety?
Well, I hate to look at it as shorting public safety, Counselor. So as you saw in the presentation that we were able to provide to this council last week, there are a number of positions in varying departments that are unfunded. In addition, we did not fund or are not funding the potential buyouts that will need to be paid out in those two public safety departments as well. There were some capital requests in a number of departments that was, that were also not funding in this budget as it's currently presented to you.
Okay. So it's not only positions within public safety that were not filling?
Funding.
Funding or filling, funding or filling. And there's the possibility that with police and fire, any capital plans that they need, we're not going to be able to adhere to right now just because of where we're at.
All city departments, to include the school department, all capital is on hold at the moment.
Going to our health insurance, that has been an item, and just so we're clear, for the city council and the community to know, before, in our budget here tonight, we have $40,500,000 that is essentially going to be transferred to health insurance, okay? We're going to be taking $40,500,000, and it's going to be sitting in the employer trust fund for the rest of the fiscal year.
It's actually transferred monthly to pay the Blue Cross bill as well as the other vendors that we have monthly bills for. It's not transferred at the beginning of the year, it's transferred on a monthly basis to pay the vendors.
Right, we don't have $40 million. I get that, whether it's monthly or not. Here's my, here's where we're at. If you go back to the last couple of years, and Mrs. Sahadi was fortunate enough to send over to us the actual breakdowns under the expenses with respect to health insurance, in FY '18, and I think it's before us now, we're looking at a little more of $36 million, if my memory serves me correctly, and what, if the paperwork is correctly. In '19, we have 36, and in FY '20, we have $36 million. This year, we're budgeted at $40,500,000 for insurance, okay? In my opinion, the health, we, I'm not in support of a budget that is cutting or not cutting or not funding public safety at its proper levels when it comes to hiring specific people to keep this city safe. With that being said, if we were to send over, if I make a motion here tonight, which I intend to do, to return the budget back to the administration to allocate $37 million in this fiscal year for health insurance, which will free up $3.5 million and do what you need to do with it. I mean, 1.4 of it could go to public safety, and you have additional monies that you'd be able to utilize for education, not going to our free cash.
Well, Counselor, I can't fiscally say that that would be a sound decision on any of your pots, but it's certainly your prerogative to send the budget back to the mayor and ask him to do that. But we spent $41.8 million in '18, $41 million in '19, which was the year we carved out the max or prescriptions and saved a little over $2.4 million. This year, we spent $41.2 million in a year where doctors were closed for a quarter of the year. So technically, we have a quarter of the year that elective surgeries did not occur, and we are being recommended from Gallagher, who is our consultant with regard to health insurance, to increase that to $45.5 million in this fiscal year. So no, I would not be supportive of that decision, but it is your decision, and you have the opportunity to vote the budget, reduce the budget.
We can reduce, reject, or approve, I get that.
Exactly.
But here's what-
Point of information.
Counsel Kadim?
I think Council President is, I think the disconnect is that instead of looking at the total amount, FY '21 budget is 45 million versus the 41 million when you look at everything. I think he's looking at the first summary, once you get past the stop-loss, which when you're looking at FY '21 actuals, he's comparing 36.8 million to the 41 million.
Yeah, that is accurate, Counselor. Thank you for that information. I'm still of the belief, and I believe we've had several transfers throughout my years on the city council, that we've brought back into and to and from the employer health trust fund.
Not since I've been here, Counselor.
You have not, at one, never once, money has never come?
No, Counselor. We had the million-dollar transfer last year that we, that we put back into the trust fund, which was the health insurance from the school department.
Okay. So how much money are we looking at coming back from FY '20 in free cash that's going to be most likely certified?
We don't have that calculated as of today. I don't know, Counselor. I can't.
Didn't you send in the presentation, we had $2.9 million in turnbacks?
I did, on the expense side, and we had 1.5 shortfall on the revenue side.
Okay, so it could be a million dollars?
It could be.
Okay. We don't know. It's not going to be two, but it could be a million.
I don't know, Counselor, because it also has to do with the change in the receivables and many other attributes go into the calculation of free cash, not just the turnbacks and the revenue.
Okay. I know this is a risk, and it might be a little risky from the city council's standpoint, but what's before us right now is a budget that has a structural deficit in it. We are taking $3 million out of our free cash and giving it to the schools. If that isn't financially prudent, nothing will be. That's not financially prudent, that's scary. I would take the risk and, on the health insurance side, and have the mayor work, even if it's even possible this year, which I know there's been discussions on offering different health insurance plans, I don't know if that would come out of this money or not, if that would help, it'd probably be more towards 2022.
It would be for 2022 because open enrollment is not until the spring.
Fair enough. I'd rather take the risk, and it might be a risk that I, that might backfire on me and it might not. I would much rather fund our public safety than fund our health insurance account when we can make additional transfers further down the road. Whether that's from, whether that's from stabilization or if it's from CARES Act money that we're sitting on, that we could potentially make the argument, maybe it's far-fetched, make the argument further down the road that due to COVID, we had to delay some surgeries, some doctor visits, whatever it is, and push it into this fiscal year that we're currently in as a result of COVID. I mean, that's, that's going to be a conversation that you may or may not be able to have with whoever is responsible for determining what we can and can't spend CARES money on. So I'm just, I'd like to take that position publicly, that I am, I don't know if it's fruitful, at least from my standpoint, to sit here for three straight nights and discuss a budget that doesn't fund our public safety at its adequate levels. It's just, it's not something that I feel comfortable with right now, today.
I understand.
And, and, and I know it's risky, and I know you're looking at me kind of like, I wouldn't do this if I were you, and I respect your position, but I also don't feel comfortable with approving a budget that has a deficit, that we're setting up a structural deficit in. And it's not, it's not the fault of this administration, I'm going to make it clear. This is COVID. This happened. Crazy things have happened to us, right? But we have to make some tough decisions, and this isn't the first time I've taken the floor and taken a tough decision that was or wasn't popular. But you know what? This whole budget is projections, and if we are able to cut, whether it's $3 million out of your employer trust fund transfer and take a, and roll the dice for our police and our fire, it's a chance I'm willing to take.
So you're saying you want to bring, and correct me if I'm wrong, you want to bring the health insurance appropriation down to a point that was lower than fiscal '18? And I bet if I go back, it's probably lower than '17 or '16.
Well, 16 was, it's a weird number. 16 was like $18 million.
Oh, the school department picked up their own health insurance that year.
That was, see, that was the year there was discussions with the health insurance.
Sorry, I should have noted that on the worksheet.
15 was 36, 17 was, I guess, 41, FY '18 was 41, FY '19 actuals looked to be at 41, and FY '20 actuals are around 41. Your budgeting, you have on your analysis 45 million in our city council budget book.
I think it's 45.
We have 40,500, so it's... What is it?
Well, if you look in your budget book and-
Yeah, page 33.
I wasn't prepared for this conversation this evening because it was on another evening, but let me find it. What page? You will see that it's 45,576, the exact number of the amount of claims to be paid. What you're seeing in the budget book that you're not seeing on the screen this evening are all of the recoveries. So we get recoveries from the prescription rebates, we get monies in from the grants, 1.4 million, we get stop-loss insurance recoveries, monies from BCTC, from community development. So the net transfer to the trust is 40,500. Each year, there is a net transfer to the trust.
Okay. Well, look, I'm of the belief, and I'll let my colleagues, I don't want to stifle debate, I am of the belief that this budget, in my opinion, cutting public safety, I'm not, I'm not, it's not something that I'm in favor of, okay?
I understand.
So yes, that's a risk I'm willing to take on the employee insurance side, the employer trust fund allocation, to make sure that our city department heads, I mean, our city is safe with police and fire. And I'm sorry if that may not be popular, it's 1.4 million. If we can't find, I'm not talking about capital projects, I'm talking about staffing levels for police and fire. If we can't cut 1.4 million out of the insurance to give to our police and fire, it's not something I'm going to be in favor of, no matter what. I'll say no to every appropriation line item in this budget. We need to staff our police and fire at the levels. We're giving our schools 100%. We need to make sure our police and fire are there. If it's 1.4 million, if that's the number, if you add those two up, that's, that's something I would make the suggestion, even if it's after debate, to reduce the line item appropriation by 1.4 million. That's something the city council has the wherewithal and the ability to do, but it's going to be up to you to reconfigure that.
Well, I had a conversation just today with the mayor. I worked on it quite a bit of the day on Friday together with the city auditor and the HR director. If we simply change the MOU in the net school spending allocation to charge the school department the premiums, rather than charge the school department actual claims, it will solve two problems. It will solve this problem that we're talking about, because the difference is about 1.6 million, and it will change, it will solve the problem of reconciling healthcare with the school department on a regular basis. What that will do is it will increase the charge of health insurance to the school department based on the premiums they pay, as opposed to based on the actual claims that are incurred.
Okay.
So that's an option that's out there. I've, I spoke about it briefly last Thursday at that meeting. It's an option that certainly would alleviate this problem that we're talking about. We could still maintain the estimates that have been provided to us by Gallagher in terms of what we're expecting the claims to be going forward. It would correct the reconciliation issue with net school spending, and it would provide approximately 1.6 million worth of funding in the city budget. Admittedly, you know, making sure that you're all, this is transparent and you all understand, to the effect of a reduction in the school department budget. So the school department budget would need to decrease.
Thank you, just on that point. So how would that affect our net school spending?
The school department, the, the health insurance would increase and the school operations would decrease. So it would still be 100% of net school spending, but one number would go up and another would go down.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm going to make a motion that the city council return the budget back to the administration utilizing a reduction in the employer health trust fund, which is equalling 1.4 million to give our police and our fire adequate staffing levels for FY '21. That's a motion made, Madam Vice President.
Motion?
You want to make, motion made by Council Ponte, seconded by Council Peckham?
And I'm sure councilors have discussion on that, so that's the motion, and hey, if it passes, it passes, but that's the position I'm willing to take here tonight. I yield, thank you.
Counselor in seat three, Counsel Kilby?
Yes, thank you, Madam Vice President. So what is the, you have, what is the dollar amount for the 13 vacancies that we're not filling on the police department?
Police is on Wednesday, so I didn't bring that with me this evening. It was on, it was on the presentation on Tuesday night. I think Council President just indicated it was about 1.3 million, the sum total between fire and police.
I did hear you that you're in principle, I guess, not in favor of this. Is there any other items in this budget beyond the insurance where we possibly can tap into to make up for the positions in public safety?
I mean, realistically, the, the items in this budget that are fixed are the debt service, which we've talked about, healthcare, and we've got public safety in schools. All of the other departments are pretty small departments. I mean, we have the pension appropriation. I mean, I would, with all due respect, suggest that you debate this budget, and if you want to send it back on, on Wednesday evening when you're done with each of your departments, then that may be a time to, to send it back. I, I'm not going to speak for the mayor, it's the mayor's budget, but at this particular point, I'm not sure that, I would recommend anyway, that you would take a significant amount of monies out of the estimates that were done, were prepared by Gallagher and company in terms of the healthcare trust. We certainly can, but I think at this point, in my opinion anyway, I would like to, you know, have you debate all of the departments and see if you find other areas that you think could be cut, or at least, you know, cut not necessarily substantially, but every little bit counts when you're starting to add up monies. And if you go through each of the departments and you determine that there are areas that could be cut, maybe those need to be looked at, and maybe we don't need to take necessarily a million-three out of healthcare in order to fund those positions. You know, I, and I am not saying this in a bad way or a fresh way, but you know, every department has, has areas that they may want to consider not funding. Your department is, is one. We, we added $40,000 for outside, outside legal services. Do you really need outside legal services? I don't know. The answer may be yes, and you've all debated this at, you know, from time to time. I'm not here to answer whether that answer is yes or no, but that may be an area. The library is here this evening. Just today, we had a resignation. We spoke with LeAnn. We determined that we don't need to fill that position, so we were able to put back one patrolman. So we're looking- were able to put back one patrolman. So we're looking at this every day with areas that we can look at the departments and be able to potentially reduce some of the spending. And, you know, we still have the option on the table that we may want to consider, and, and we don't have to do this necessarily today. We can take the money or vote to take the money from stabilization at this particular point, but I think in the very, very near future, this council needs to really think about whether or not we need to institute a trash fee. I mean, Mr. Perry has been working diligently with the state with regard to all of the communities that have fees, and maybe that's the direction we need to go back into. You know, maybe, maybe Mayor Sutter had a good idea when he implemented the trash fee, and maybe that's the fairest way to do this.
I was intimately part of that, that whole group that initiated through the assessors' office.
Exactly. That's right. You were here at the time.
But that's, it's an interesting thought, to say the least. But, Mary, the GNC, we spoke about that up in the, in our office, governmental insurance?
GIC.
Could the mayor implement that? He could implement that without collective bargaining? And what possibly would be savings if, and what would be the timeline, and what couldn't be this budget?
So, so the timeline would be clearly fit, the, oh, God. That's what I get for touching the wires. The timeline could, couldn't be until fiscal '22, because open enrollment is not until March.
I didn't hear you say.
However, I don't believe he can do it unilaterally. But there is some sections of the law that allows for significant savings, but they have to be like-kind plans. Mrs. LaFlash was here and did spend a great deal of time talking to us with regard to that possibility. The other possibility that we're looking into, as we continue to look at ways to save taxpayer dollars, is to add a third health insurance plan. So the high deductible plan might not be a plan that individuals and Councilor in seat two is shaking her head, her head, because she knows all about those plans, may not be a plan that is really exciting to an employee. But maybe we can have another level of an HMO that would allow for a little bit less in the terms of benefits, if you will. So have higher deductible levels, but not as high as a high deductible plan, but not as generous as the plan we currently have. And that could potentially save us some dollars as well. Mrs. LaFlash is looking at those types of options right now. But again, that will be for fiscal '20, '22, as it relates to open enrollment and being able to get that plan underway, so to speak. We are also out to bid right now, so maybe it's, it's a matter of changing the vendor. Maybe another vendor will come in, Tufts, Havid. They may come in and outbid Blue Cross, our current vendor. And so that may be an option.
So in support of the president's possible motion here, there is possibility that this could be re-schemed during this fiscal year.
That's correct.
I yield.
Thank you. Counselor in seat one, Counselor Lickadeen.
Thank you. Can I just get clarification on the last thing? There's, there's a possibility that this could be re-schemed?
Well, I, I think he's, he's speaking about adding the additional HMO plan.
Oh, okay.
And, and potentially the changing of the vendor, because as I indicated, the, it is out for bid right now.
Okay. Before I get to my questions, I just want to make a couple of statements on, on some items that were stated. Quite frankly, you know, I, I've been one that has told the administration that I want to work together in terms of this budget. However, it's not our responsibility to go through this budget, fine line item cuts, do all these reductions. That needs to come from the mayor. Personally, I'm getting tired of everything getting thrown down on the city council, that we need to start looking at a trash fee, that's coming from the mayor, right? So Mayor Coogan needs to figure out what he's going to be doing. He's the guy that's getting paid to run the city. It's not just COVID-19, handing out masks and doing everything else. We should have been doing this three months ago, okay? So if we want to start talking about trash fees, we want to start talking about all this other stuff, that needs to come from the administration. To continue to punt and kicking on the city council and try, and for us to try to figure out what's going on is absolutely ridiculous. And I, for one, will not continue to take this. If I hear that again, then we're going to have some issues, and, and I will go line by line. The second thing is, in terms of the school department with the health insurance, I disagree with that. I, I think it's an, it's an unfair system. I think what we're doing is really shifting the burden over to the schools to pay a little bit more with the premiums. If, if we force them to do premiums and their claims come in less, they're essentially funding the city's healthcare system higher. If the claims come in higher than what the premiums are, are being charged, are we going to go back to the schools? Or is, is the city side going to be picking up the, the additional burden? So I'm not,
the city side would be responsible to pick up the burden.
So I, I'm not sure. I mean, that, that makes a whole lot of sense. In terms of the GIC, I'm adamantly opposed to the, to the GIC. Plan design allows us to mimic up to the GIC. We can do everything that the GIC has in terms of their benchmark, the Tufts Navigator Plan. We can control, and I say we, the city can control its premiums, it can control its deductibles. Once we go into the GIC, we have zero control. If the GIC does not have enough money in their, their account, there will be mid-year adjustments that the city has to pick up. So I don't necessarily think, and I had this conversation with the mayor's office, that the GIC does not make any sense. I don't think it's a good deal for city employees, so that's one thing. Where, and, and I agree with Council, Council President, I think, I think he's spot on. I, I do have some, some questions in regards to the spreadsheet that you have up right now on, on the screen. Do you have copies of that, Mrs. Sahadi, for councilors who may not be able to see it from their desk?
I sent it this morning.
Okay, councilors should have it in their emails, then. I just wanted to make sure. I appreciate that. So the spreadsheet that you have there, you had stated that Gallagher had given us, which is typical, the estimates, which comes in about 9%. You've got 29.5 million there, and then you've got 3.6 million just below that. What's, what's that 3.6 million?
That was not included in the original February estimate, but needed to be included per Mrs. LaFlash on 5/28/20. It was just our way of getting to the actual estimates.
So what wasn't, I guess, what wasn't included in the original estimate?
I, I don't know. I don't have her original spreadsheets.
So I, I guess what I would, what I would suggest is, and this is where I agree with Council President, I don't think it's necessarily risky at all to have this reduction. And quite frankly, I think his, his original motion of 3.5 million is, is not risky in the least. We've got Gallagher, who always comes in anywhere between 7 to, to 10% on all their estimates. And their job is really to try to predict what the claims are going to be and everything like that, and they typically come in high. When it's all said and done, I bet if you took the, the average, you're, you're probably anywhere between 5 or 6%. So from my standpoint, you're about 4%. I mean, because this 11.5% includes stop-loss. So I, so on that 9%, I, I'd suggest that you probably have about 4%. And quite frankly, I, I don't, I don't think it's unrealistic to think that we're going to have another shutdown come October and November, once we get everybody back to school. And if that's the case, we're going to have the same exact situation that we've had in FY20, where people are not going to utilize the, the claims, which is even going to further exaggerate the amount of money that's in there, generating a surplus. Now, now the question now becomes, and I, and I've said this from, from day one when we were talking with the administration, I don't know how any of us votes to approve this budget with, and, and you're calling them vacancies, they're, they're essentially eliminations of a positions. They're not, they're not truly vacancies. We're not budgeting. A vacancy, by definition, is something that has been budgeted and is left unfilled.
I understand. I haven't called them vacancies at all. They're unfunded positions.
And the budget says unfun, vacancies. So, you know, from my standpoint, we've, we've been here for a while in terms of police and fire. We've been down this road back in 2009, with the NC cuts, trying to build back up, only to 10 years later, be back to 2009, 2010. And I, and I, quite frankly, I don't, I don't think we need to be there. I, I think we need to really take some, some looks at the other departments, and, and here we are with, with the healthcare. I, I think the healthcare is a little on, on the high side. We've got about a, I, I believe you said you have got a 3.8 million, almost $3.9 million reserve. How much is the three months?
I, we, the fund balance is 3.8 million. I think I clearly pointed out at the bottom of the sheet that I sent to all of you, is that the, the deposits held, and I, I apologize, I didn't know we were doing this this evening, I don't have that with me, but the deposits held, I want to say is a little bit over $4 million.
I'm sorry, I see that.
So clearly, the deposits held is not spendable. It's held by Blue Cross. So we cannot spend those dollars. So although they are included in the...
So here's, here's another thing about Blue Cross, right? So Blue Cross keeps, keeps all this, this 4.4 million, right? Do we, do we have an investment policy with, with the trust fund for the healthcare? Are we investing any of the monies that's in there? Or is it just sitting there?
Blue Cross is holding that. Not us.
Right. So, no, no, I know that. So here, that, that gets to my point.
I under, I understand what you're saying, but our trust, right.
So when Blue Cross finally decides that they want to reconcile this payments, we're going to, we're going to get about $2 million, $3 million back, they're holding on to our money, we're not, right? So again, we're losing on the investment piece. They do it all the time, right? And it's an unfortunate situation. I think that's a conversation the city needs to have with Blue Cross, Blue Shield. That's just an aside. So how much, how much do we need for, for the rule of thumb of the three-month hold? What's that equate to?
It, it depends on, it truly depends on how you look at it. The incurred but not reported over the last number of years has been slightly over 2 million. Employer share, not combined.
Right. On the, the employer trust fund?
Right.
Right. Okay. Yeah, just when I'm looking at the budget, can, I, I noticed, and I was following you, when you, when you look at the FY21, I see where you're pulling the 45.5 million. You were showing for FY20 actuals, 41.1, 41.2, if you were rounding up in that, that column there.
So they came in higher than what was in last year's budget. Last year's budget was 40,800.
Right. So, so we had, so you, claims came in higher by one point, by a million dollars, roughly?
Roughly.
So the, that was made up just by the, the...
Some of it was made up by the recoveries, the Maxor prescription rebates, as well as, I, I don't know if there was a, a swing in the stop-loss insurance. I would have to look at that.
Can we just, I'm, I'm just curious, because I mean, we, we heard the schools, we had a significant savings in the schools, and granted, we transferred that over back, back to them. But I mean, we've got about a million. It seems, it seems a little high for the utilization not being there.
Well, I can tell you that the 41,184 are the actual bills paid.
Mm-hmm.
And actually, this year, fiscal '20, and I know this is getting into the weeds in terms of the conversation, but because of COVID and the doctors not seeing their patients, the incurred but not reported actually decreased, which is almost never the case from year to the year.
Right. But even with the, so with the total, right, even with that 41.1 to the 45, you're, you're roughly at like 10%, just, just under 11%. Right? That, to me, that, that seems high. I mean, I, I don't, I think that somewhere in, in the 5 to 6% is, is something that's more reasonable. And, and I don't necessarily disagree with Council President. Like I said, I, I think the, you know, the $3 million, I think there's, there's some wiggle room in there. But there's definitely, in my opinion, the 1.4, 1.5 that, that you're looking for. So that's, I mean, that's just my take. So if, if the council wants to send this back and take a vote, I would agree with you that we probably should do that now, as opposed to going through the entire budget and, and really then having conversations about things that are just going to change at the end of the day anyways. So I, I'll be supporting it with that a yield.
Thank you. Counselor in seat two, Counselor Lickadeen.
Yeah, I agree with my colleague in seat one, that I, I don't think GIC is the way to go. And as you said, I can say that, because I am in the GIC. So...
I hope I wasn't telling any secrets, but...
No, you weren't. Not at all.
You could, you could make some comparisons to us that I certainly wasn't familiar with.
Yeah. No, eventually, I was going to be saying it, so that's fine. And, you know, for a number of reasons. You know, one of them being, in the discussion that I had with you and the mayor, he said to me, "Oh, you're in the most expensive plan." And I said, "That's correct, because if I get seriously ill, I want the coverage, and that's the only way I can have it." So just as part of the argument to not have GIC, if the majority of the people took my, the way I think, it wouldn't cost the city less. It would cost the city more. So it's just one of the negatives with the GIC. Now, the other thing I was doing when I was going through the budget, and I know we're not getting into all of that, but we have a vacancy in, I was looking at it from the perspective of, we have a vacancy, the Assistant Assessor Two, a position. Whether that was something that would be filled or not filled, if that was something you'd be looking for. Because if you weren't looking for it, it certainly funds a public safety position. So I was, when I was going through the budget, was looking at different things like that, that how many positions can we fill with these funded line items that we perhaps aren't going to fill? So just another avenue aside from this. But I understand the question at hand now is the motion on the table, which I also will support. So with that, I'll yield.
Thank you. Counselor in seat five, Counselor Lee.
Some, just some, some questions. I, I just was, I'm looking at the fact that fiscal year 2020 to March 31st doesn't have any recoveries in it. And I'm just curious if, if there were, were any recoveries at all, or they're just not listed in there?
Oh, yes, certainly, Counselor. There are recoveries every month. It, it just wasn't populated in, in the column that you have there. In the document that I believe got sent to you by email, it's in there for the total, and I could give it to you on a quarterly basis if, if you wanted.
I want to, I want to have, I have just a couple of questions of that, that behind me, but I just wanted to get an idea of, when you do your projections, you, you obviously are looking at what you do recruit, you know, what you do recover in those, in those lines. So I, the reason why that, the reason why I ask is because I'm trying to figure out why or how you, you came to some of the figures in the projections. Because you have, you're at 950,000 in fiscal year 2020, but we're up to about 1.8 million in fiscal year 2021 on that projection. So there's no, there's no, for me to see it, there's no progression as to how you, you know, got to that figure.
I, I can provide you with that. We have that in the books and records of the city.
The, no. And, and in that vein, the library is at 168,000, and then you're at 200,000. Was that retiree, was that retiring, was, was the, was the retiree part of that process of...
Um, no, this is their contribution for the health insurance.
Okay. All right. And then just other, I'm always looking at other, I'm always asking what other stands for. You have $70,000 there in the 21, 2021 projection, and I just would like to know what that entails.
I would have to go back to see what the prior year actuals were for other revenue sources within that, that fund, that employer healthcare trust fund.
Okay. And then behind me, again, other. We're at a, so in the actuals, we're pretty low in, in fiscal year 18 and 19, and then you go to 20, and it's almost double or triple the figure, maybe even quadruple, of the previous year. So I was just curious as to what created that?
I, without looking at the detail in the immunist reports, I don't know what's charged to that line item.
Okay. Because the numbers are, you know, they're very disproportionate, so I was just curious as to where...
Certainly, I can, I can get that information.
Because you used those figures to then do the projection for the next year, right?
Uh, yes, we do.
We're at 27,000, I, I believe, in that next one?
Yes.
So I just, it's just curious as to know where, because these things all add up eventually, you know? So if we, if we see those, I, I was, you know, when we have these conversations about the budget, I see other, I see expense, you know? I'm, I'm the one that always wants to try to see those receipts and, but I, I know it's, I guess it's difficult to get all that and bring it to the table. But I yield on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor in seat six, Counselor Peckham.
All right. I know it's not going to be a shock to you, Mrs. Sahadi, but I'm 100% on board with Council President and my colleagues. I've gone on record saying that if there was a cut to public safety, then I would be a no. I will be a no for each line item. I have a question. The SAFA grant, what year are we in?
I think we're in year two.
Okay. So we're at 180 firefighters. The grant, when it was proposed, said the fire department had to go to 195. Since we're not hiring any firefighters, where are we coming up with this roughly $600,000 to give back to the, the government for the SAFA grant? Because it was my understanding that if we didn't reach that number, we were going to have to pay back with a penalty.
I believe, under the circumstances with COVID, there are... I believe, under the circumstances with COVID, there are waivers available and that the chief is, has or is applying for the waiver.
Okay, um, that was a, a question I had, cause I know we had the safer grant, and there had to be-
That's true.
There had to be a specific number of firefighters, and we haven't met that.
Agreed.
Um, the other thing is, the mayor had, had a poll, and why have a poll if the citizens of the city of Fall River are telling you public safety is their biggest topic right now and their biggest concern, and then not fund them? That doesn't, doesn't add up to me. Um, again, I went on, I went on record saying I'd be a no vote, um, and I'm going to be, unless this is sent back to you guys and you come back with a, a budget that funds public safety entirely. With that, I yield, thank you.
Thank you, Consulor in seat eight, Consulor Perera.
Well, I'll tell you, my, uh, perspective on this health insurance is that there has been eleven communities that have gotten out of GIC. The only reason the city would want to get into GIC is because you don't need to come up with upfront money to join, the state does that. Blue Cross and Blue Shield, I don't even know about having a new vendor coming in or changing insurance, because every union has that in their contract, so if it's in their contract, you can't just go and change it. But looking to get something cheaper, so even if, let's say, um, a health insurance plan was fifty dollars a month cheaper, but you go to the hospital, you're gonna pay a total of seven hundred with what we have now, you go to a GIC, it's gonna be fifteen hundred, that, that's a big difference. If you have a family plan, your limit is three thousand dollars for your co-pays, you know, for your, your expenses, but then it could go up to ten thousand dollars, that's a heck of a lot more. You're giving people the option of whether or not they're gonna go locally, or they're gonna go to, to Boston, um, or Rhode Island, uh, anywhere else. I just think that looking at any other healthcare option other than trying to carve out another premium with the Blue Cross and Blue Shield, we could go to a premium plan, but the city couldn't go to a premium plan because the city didn't have the money for the upfront that they wanted. So we've, we've never had that money, um, to do something different. And the way that they have it, you get, from KNRX, you get reimbursements on both of them. I honestly think that you need to have a discussion on health insurance with everybody at the table, with Blue Cross, Blue Shield, with Gallagher, to look at what, you know, what is the best. I mean, I get it with police and fire, believe me, I've worked with police officers through my entire career, and, and I get that they're strapped. But I wanna hear from the chief of the police department, and I wanna hear from the chief of the fire department to see what they're looking at within their budgets, what they can work with, what they can't. I don't know, do we suspend any new lieutenants, sergeants, captains until we find out where we can use this COVID money? How many, you know, officers, high-ranking officers do we have versus officers on the street? I, I don't have those answers. But I think if you have a police of, of the chief, uh, chief of the police department, a chief of the fire department, we should at least give them the option to come forward with what they think, because you're looking at public safety, I get it, I've worked with them and I want it. However, I look at somebody like Mr. Kenny in the planning department, you wanna bring in new businesses? You wanna bring in more money? You wanna generate stuff into the city? How do you do that when you have one planner and an assistant? New Bedford's got seven people in their office, so of course they're going leaps and bounds ahead of us, I hate to say it. And the other thing, I mean, I'll say it to Mrs. Sahadi here, and I mean no offense by it, but, you know, now we need a trash fee. I think I liked it better when department heads were civil service, because they were honest with the council. They came down and they were honest with us. Last year, I know the water department, there was raises of twenty thousand dollars, ten thousand dollars, and this year we're broke. If we can't afford it, we can't afford it. If you wanna give somebody a thousand dollar raise or a two thousand dollar raise, that's within what we can afford, fine, but if you're gonna look at getting, sucking it out of the insurance and changing the insurance around, the only thing you're doing is taking all of the co-pays out of the employers' and the retirees' pockets, that's what you're doing. And that's not fair to do. It's not fair to do. You have to spend money to make money, I get it, but I also feel that, sitting here, when you have various administrations I've worked with, and you have people coming here, "Yes, we can afford this, yes, we can afford that," and all of a sudden, we can't afford anything? Well then, who the heck is lying to us? And if you're gonna come down and tell us what the mayor wants you to say, because you work for the mayor technically, but I find that heartbreaking, because we, as counselors that are taking the votes, we're not given all the information. We're never given all the information. Hey, they got rid of bags last year. Did anybody know that we then paid Way Zero to go around to all over Walmart, uh, Ammaral's Market, Rite Aid, to go around and pick up bags that they had there? And that was eighty-seven thousand dollars or ninety thousand dollars that we spent. There's your two police officers, two more, because we did something stupid like that. But was the council made aware of that? No, we weren't. But then, you know, when it hits the fan, people point at us. I just think, I understand what you're saying, but to be honest with you, I don't particularly care for this budget either, and let's move on from it. But I would feel better if I had the opportunity to sit with the chief of police, to sit with the chief of the fire department, and let's see what their thoughts are, because we need money for other places too. And that's all I have to say right now about that. I really wasn't as prepared to talk about this, because Mrs. Sahadi's right, this was on for tomorrow night, and I think it would have been prudent to wait for that, but I was alone vote, but I wanted you to be prepared, and I wanted to be prepared, and I had some information here, but not everything I had written out on that. With that, I yield, Mr. President.
Thank you, Consulor in seat seven, Consular Pelletier.
Thank you. It seems to me every time we start messing around with insurance, and we change, uh, different companies or whatever the case may be, it turns out that the employees that got the insurance pay more, so they're taking money out of their pockets. So, you know, and that's another way you can grab the money. And to say that you can call it what you want, unfunded or defund the police states, I mean, the police or the fire department, it's, it's, uh, it's not right, I don't think that. You, you've got a lot of different people that move into the city of Fall River, and a lot of times, you've got issues, uh, with some of these people, and, uh, you need the police to, to oversee these people. A lot of the people that get in trouble in Fall River are not for rights, and I said it before, they come from different communities, uh, uh, close to Boston or whatever they, they come, but they gotta be watched at all times. And to say, uh, we're gonna not fund these positions, it, it just don't make any sense. Now, we talked about a twelve-man, a car, uh, is that twenty-four-seven that we're doing?
Um, we would have to-
Twelve, twelve cars?
Twelve cars.
Point of information. That would have been quite the car, Consulor.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Let's, let's change that around, right. Twelve, twelve cars, first shift.
Point of information on that? Um, to my knowledge, they run Monday through Friday, ten cars.
Right.
Um, twenty-four-seven.
Yeah.
And then they'll add the, uh, the other two cars on the weekend.
Friday and Saturday.
Yes, so car six and car eleven are men, five days a week.
Well, they said they would do it twelve all the time, but-
Yeah, twelve's been the number we've had for, as far back as I can remember, I worked there going on, I don't know, two thousand two, you know?
I didn't, I didn't think we had twelve cars.
Yeah, we've always had twelve sectors, and it's always had a sector car, most were actually two-man cars back then.
Yeah.
But now we have ten one-man cars, and they'll run a couple of special office units here and there.
Consular Pelletier.
All right, so are we saying that we don't fund these positions, is that gonna affect the police department as far as services?
Um, the police chief will be here on Wednesday to speak specifically to his department. Um, we have had, the mayor's had, um, a number of conversations with him with regard to the funding of his department as well as the staffing of his department. Um, we have added, as I said, um, an additional patrol person, um, just today. Um, there have been, um, a couple that have retired, and he, I believe, is sending two additional to the academy. So we are working very closely with Chief Cardosa to, um, fund the appropriate amount of patrol that he needs to run that department and keep all of the residents of the city safe. Um, he's also looking into, um, together with the mayor, um, the possibility of having a consultant come in and do a review of, um, the superiors and their job descriptions and duties, and the patrolmen and their job descriptions and duties, to potentially provide the city with recommendations to more efficiently run, um, the police department. But as of right now, Consulor, it's my understanding from the chief that he, um, the, the men he has available to, to work are sufficient to, um, keep, um, all of us safe, and that's really what's important here.
So you're gonna put two more on, but there'll be twelve that are not going back?
Right now, um, as of today, I believe there are eleven unfunded positions, and as we are able to find funding available to them, we will bring additional appropriations to this council, um, for a vote, um, hopefully, prior to, um, when the recap needs to be approved, which is generally in November. So, um, you know, this is being a very unique year, a lot of things have happened this year that are, that are different than have ever happened in, in prior years, um, and we are certainly hopeful that, um, and certainly we know, based on everything, I mean, we don't even have from the state yet what the, um, assessments are going to be, so we don't have the additional revenue that comes in from other sources, nor do we have the assessments. The only thing that is provided to us to date is the chapter seventy money and the un, um, the class, the unrestricted general aid. Um, there is still, there will still be a subsequent, a supplement appropriation at some time prior to, um, the tax rate being set. There has to be, all of the information is not even available in this document. We are, we have this document prepared, and we are hopeful that this council will, um, pass a budget so that we can go into the month of September without another monthly, um, one-month budget.
Are you still dealing with their contract, they're looking for a raise, or is that, uh, you can't talk about it?
We have, we have, um, open contracts right now for the fire, the superiors, the patrol, the teamsters, and the custodians.
And supposing they get whatever, small stipend or raise or whatever, does that affect the budget as well, or is that included?
That is not included in this budget.
It's not included?
It is not.
So if they decide they're gonna up it, uh, one point five, two percent?
It is not included in this budget, no, don't counsel.
And that's, and if, uh, if they deem that, uh, they should be getting it, uh, and they don't get it, uh, could they go on strike? They gonna do that? Or not? I don't know. I'm trying to weigh everything out here. All right, let me ask you one question, what is considering a trash fee? What's the amount?
Uh, I don't believe the mayor has as really vetted out what the amount would be. Um, when the trash fee existed in the, initially, under Mayor Sutter, it was ten dollars a month, as I remember.
Per apartment.
Per apartment, that's correct, per unit.
So what does he need to correct the negative? The mayor?
What negative?
Well, all, all the stuff that we have, the police are not in there, you remove so many people on this thing, streets and highways and, and, uh, some of the parks and everything else. It looks like, uh, the city's gonna have nobody to work in the city of Fall River. Unfunded here, unfunded here. I mean, the list goes on, you gave it to us, and, uh, you know, uh, it's, it's tough, we don't know really what's going on, and, and, uh, to find out what it's gonna be, I know the people out there do not wanna see, eh, you know, more trash fees or even water rates that we argued about, about a month ago, and it was minute to what's happening now with the police, the firemen, and all the unfunded things that you have, that you presented to us, that's a lot. Uh, and where do we go? You, you talk about city services, yeah, well, I don't think we're supplying city services, cause we don't have the money. Where's the money coming from? I don't know, I'm broke, that's all. But we don't want everybody out there to be broke too. I mean, i- if it's gonna be a ten, a twenty-dollar, a trash fee, that's one thing that you can say, but it's another thing for us to say, what are we gonna do here? It's either you're gonna save the city or not save the city, or you're gonna hurt the taxpayers, or you're gonna lose the fire, the policemen, and everything else that's in your list that you present to, to us, which has done a good job. You just gotta find the money.
I'm looking for it, Consulor, every day, every day.
The mats and everything else. All right, um, I listen to everybody else, and I just think we don't wanna lose all these people, and the people out there are concerned about their safety in fire as well, even the fire, but you can complain all you want, they've been out five or six times, you know, uh, out there saving people. Of course, it never gave me a ride, but that's besides the point, I don't want one, you know? But with that said, I yield, thank you.
Thank you, Consulor. Um, just so the councilors, before I recognize our colleague in seat one, there's been several , uh, councillors who weren't sure, and I don't think Mrs. Sahadi had the presentation in front of us. In the presentation that we had last week, it was stated that police, twelve positions that equal six hundred and seventy thousand, two hundred and three dol, uh, two hundred and three, and fire, thirteen positions at seven forty-two, three sixty-eight, that does not include the fire buyouts and the police buyouts. Before I recognize, Consulor in seat one, Council Vice President, you're the only one that hasn't spoke on this, would you like the floor?
Yes, please.
Madam Vice President.
Thank you. Mrs. Sahadi, um, I'm also in agreement with Council President, I would rather, um, see this go back and have these positions funded. We are supposed to have a hundred and ninety-five firemen, we'd be at about, we're at about a hundred and eighty, and in the budget, we have six anticipated retirements, so we're gonna be at one seventy-four, one seventy-five, and was the overtime level funded?
Um, I believe so, Consulor.
In police and fire, so if we have twenty less firemen and level funded overtime, that's not gonna work, I haven't done the numbers in police yet, cause I didn't know this was coming up. Um, I know that you said you were working at finding the funds, um, and there was, the word hopefully used in there, I can't support a budget that uses those terms in, in terms of filling these, um, these positions, so I'm not sure if it's worth continuing all of these discussions, Council President, and then having things change and, um, the conversations change. If we wanna send this back and, uh, reschedule, reschedule the meetings, I would be fine with that as well. That I yield, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Consulor in seat one, Consulor Kneen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, so when I was, had the opportunity just to kinda look at these numbers, these, these numbers don't make sense to me, um, so I'm just hoping that you can kinda clarify some things for me. So you said you didn't, you weren't sure what the three point six million dollar increase was, right?
Um, correct. I'd, I'd have to look, I, I actually believe that it's, it's, it's part of the Blue Cross amount just broken out into a separate category, um, based on what I've written there, but I would have to look, Consulor, I, I don't recall.
So, just looking at the notes, the nine percent increase per Diam or Gallagher, um, so that's an additional nine percent, but the numbers, just Blue Cross alone, we're looking at a seventeen point eight percent increase?
That's based on, on her analysis, I believe she compares her analysis to what she utilized early in the previous, um, season. You worked with her often when you were here. I believe that's how she does it, and she doesn't compare it to the actual, she wouldn't know what the actual was at that given time. So I'm thinking in February, it's, she's looking at her funded versus her funded from the prior year. But we can certainly bring down, um-
Yeah, cause I mean-
Mrs. LaFlash as well as Mrs. Coelho, and they can speak to you more specifically to health insurance.
I mean, cause in all the years that, I mean- I mean, because in all the years that, I mean, all the years that I've been doing healthcare, I've never seen healthcare numbers over 10%. Never. Not even in any estimates, so I'm not even sure. I mean, you just look at line one, the 29.5, divide that by the FY '20, that gets you a 4.8% increase. So that, to me, makes more, more sense. That additional $3.6 million alone is a 13% increase.
Well, again, you're comparing it to the 20 actuals, so I...
Even if I go to FY '20, I'm at 12.3%. That's still too high.
All right, as again, you can certainly ask Mrs. LaFlash to come and she and Mrs. Coelho, and I'm sure they will certainly be able to explain the healthcare increases to you better than I can. I don't, I don't work on this specifically. I can tell you, however, if you look at FY '19, FY '19, the savings existed because we carved out the Maxor prescription, so there should have been about a $2.6 million savings. There was an anticipation, if we're looking at just the Blue Cross that Gallagher estimates for us, there was an anticipation that this year, there may have been another $2 million that we would be spending on healthcare, but we did not because the last quarter of the year, there was generally not the claims that normally would have existed. So it was explained to me that that would have been approximately $38 million. Going up to $41 million from what would have been 38 is not necessarily unreasonable, at least not in my opinion.
But even with the prescription, I mean, you came down about $1 million, so, I mean, the net of that should be about a $1 million swing, right? So, I mean, to see, to see numbers of 17, even 12% is, is pretty high. I mean, the market is just not calling for that.
I can just reiterate what I just indicated. These are estimates from our consultant.
But Mrs. Sahadi, I don't mean to, I don't mean to interrupt you, right? But when you get these estimates respectfully, truthfully, when you get these estimates from these consultants and all these people who advise the city, like, what is the city's response to these things? Do we just accept them on basic principle?
No, no, Counsel, Counsel President, no. I just indicated to you, the explanation was in fiscal '19, we saved $2.5 million, $2.4 million because we carved out the prescription drugs. In fiscal '20, we had COVID-19. We had no doctors for the last quarter of the year. And so the anticipation is that those, the total, sum total, whether or not the allocation between Blue Cross and Maxor and Kinorex and stop loss insurance is 100% accurate, but that would have brought us to about $38 million this year. So the increase to $41 million is not unreasonable.
Okay. I just, I'm just wondering, and I know you do your due diligence, but...
I do. I look at them and I do, but I do need to rely on those that know the healthcare industry and know the medical profession and rely on them for their expertise in the estimates of what they believe the claims to be in the future years. Now, Counselor in seat number one is correct. There were years within the city of Fall River that I'm aware of anyway, that they would take those estimates from Mrs. LaFlash and they would do what they refer to as apply a utilization. So they would take the number and they would, instead of budgeting what Mrs. LaFlash provided us with, they would budget 99% of that number, or they would budget 98% of that budget. I don't have those facts exactly, but I do know that the previous city auditor, together with the city administrator, would look at those and they would take a utilization and, and hope for the best in order to balance the budget. We did not do that this year. We utilized the information that was provided. It's a crazy year. We have no idea what the fall's gonna bring, and so I didn't take the information from Gallagher and discounted by any percentage. I included in the budget exactly the amounts that were presented to us.
Counselor in seat one.
Are you saying we should take a utilization of 1% or 2%? We could certainly do that and see what happens.
No, but I just think, you know, listen, Gallagher's in the business to consult for us, right? So they're gonna take a very, very conservative approach, right? So, because they don't want to provide any type of funding estimate to you that's gonna be, you know, not met at the end of the year, right? So that's what they typically do, and they're pulling from Blue Cross Blue Shield. So then Blue Cross is adding, you know, there's always at least a 2% to 3% buffer on, on the numbers that they got. And I just, I mean, to look at the numbers, 17%, even 12% or 13% to me seems, seems high when we're looking at this, right? So at this point, I think it's just a matter of getting them back to the table, seeing how, what they took, what claims they were looking at. I mean, there's gotta be some type of benchmark that they're, they're looking at and where it's coming in. I mean, for her to come back in February and tell us that she missed $3.6 million, I don't know, to me, it...
You do understand, though, I do, and I just kind of want to make this clear. So for every, every dollar, basically, that we carve out of this, 55% of it goes back to the school budget because it's part of net school spending. That's how we started this conversation this evening. So it's not a direct reduction on the city's side because the budget is allocated, the $45 million is allocated between the school and...
But the budget, the budget you have before us is at 100%.
But it won't be once I cut out the health insurance. It won't be 100% anymore.
But that just means at the end of the year, we were, we were gonna be short whatever number we're pulling out, right?
Or we're gonna owe, or we're gonna owe them again.
Right, so...
So we're back to the same problem that we've currently got with health insurance and net school spending.
Here's, here's my take. I'd rather be short on that school spending at the end of the year because we knew healthcare wasn't even close to being what it was and getting police officers on the street.
So we just told the school committee that we would guarantee them 100% of net school spending, and now we're gonna reduce it before we even get a budget passed to something less than 100%.
This is the problem. When we commit to 100% of net school spending, which we have to do, we need to get a good handle on the healthcare, and if the healthcare numbers are not what we anticipate, if we're short a million dollars, then we've got to find another million dollars to give them to spend in the beginning of the year so that they have 100%. Playing the game of, you know, let's bump up the healthcare numbers to make it look like when we're putting in for the year-end report that we're budgeted at 100% of net school spending, and then have the year-end report come out at 98%, and then we have a rollover, it doesn't make any sense.
But that's not what we did here. We utilized exactly what the company, Gallagher, as well as Kevin Almeida, allocated for health insurance in net school spending, which is 55%, I believe, of the total $45 million amount.
Okay, so my question then would be, if we, if we did a 10-year analysis, year over year, even in the worst years, even before we did plan design, we're not at 17%. We're not even close to 17% increases, and that's before we even got to plan design. Now we have plan design, we have the ability, we have the high deductible. We're talking about people getting into the high deductible plan. We've got stipends for healthcare opt-out, and we're still at 17%. I can't even fathom that. That number is just so big. I just, I, I don't know. I get there, our consultant, it just doesn't make sense to me. 17% seems high. I gotta be missing something just on the surface of what's going on. There's something I'm missing because the 17.8% does not make any sense. Not even 13%, not even if I look at FY '19 actuals to get to the 12.3%, doesn't make any sense. With that, I yield.
Counselor in seat six, Counselor Peckham.
Mrs. Sahadi, how many offices did you say we were looking to hire?
I believe he's got four in the academy now, and he's bringing two more in. Please don't...
Civil Service has three vacancies looking to hire for the four of the police department. Closing date of August 27, 2020. Just for clarification, it's on the Civil Service website, so it says we're looking to hire three patrolmen right now.
Three? In addition to the three he's just put in the academy?
It's...
So that would be six.
The application process is still open.
So that would be six in total?
Yeah, so I'm just, just for clarification, I happen to see that.
He's, he has turnover on a regular basis, so...
Okay. The other thing to point to, Counsel Pelletier, we went to 12 cars. I actually just had a very veteran sergeant, he's been retired for many years, he's watching. We went to 12 cars in 1965 is when they went to 12 sectors. I can tell you the exact date that we went to 10 cars. It was March 9th of 2009 because it was the day I got laid off, and no matter how unprecedented of a year we've had, we've been 11 years with 10 cars. So we have to fix it. You gotta fund them, and we have to fix it to where we have 12 patrolmen. I don't care. It's not gonna be any better next year. So we're gonna run 10 cars this year, 10 cars next year. The people that own houses in Sector 6 and the people that own houses in Sector 11 that pay taxes deserve the same protection as the other 10 sectors. They're paying the same amount of taxes, they deserve the same amount of public safety. I just want to make that clear. It's the response timing to Car 6. Car 6 runs all the way down to Dumont Field. If Car 2's gotta go there, or Car 5's gotta go there, the response time, there's a big difference in response time when you don't have a car in those sectors. That's the biggest part of why I want them funded, is the 12 cars back and for officer safety purposes as well. You get 10 guys on the road, two more guys, it's safer for them as well. With that, I yield, I appreciate it.
Counselor in seat four, Counsel Vice President Lebo.
I just have a couple of general questions, Mrs. Sahadi. In the mayor's letter, it's just some wording. It says that he has eliminated a number of vacant positions from this budget, but I noticed that there are some funded vacant and some unfunded vacant. Are there additional vacancies that we're not seeing here, or are they all indicated in here?
So you have funded in that budget, as I remember. The city administrator position is funded as well as the city engineer. I believe those are the only two funded positions when we put the document together. There's certainly been resignations since then. They are probably within this document with an individual's name because they've resigned after the document was put together. So there certainly could be vacant positions currently that are in the budget that are vacant and funded, but I don't know specifically I would have to...
There was none that were removed. They're all in a line item here somewhere, either funded or unfunded.
Yes.
Okay.
As far as I know, yes.
The second question, I heard you say it two ways tonight. The capital of requests, are they all on hold or are some on hold?
I believe they're all on hold.
Okay.
I can check with the mayor, but I believe they're all on hold. Anything that was capital that we were gonna fund with operating monies was removed from the budget. Anything that is, was planning on coming down to you for approval for new projects, as you know, has not come down to you and at this point will not...
Okay. Just again, in the wording on the mayor's letter, it says the number of capital items have been dropped, but I heard you say all, so I just wanted to clarify.
In this particular budget, as of this version of it, because as you know, there's been more than one version of this particular budget, they're all, they've all been removed.
Okay. And then the last question, do we have a list of the departments and their turnback amounts from '20?
Well, it would have been for the most part in your quarterly report.
In the fourth quarter, okay.
In your fourth quarter report. I mean, I can drill it down to, you know, a smaller list, but in your fourth quarter report, you should see it broken down by category on pages. I guess it would be two and three of your, of your quarterly report. But I can certainly drill that down to just by department if that's helpful.
And the amount.
And the amounts, of course, yeah.
Thank you. I yield.
Thank you. Anything further from the council? There's a motion on the floor right now to return the budget to the mayor with a request for a reduction of $1.4 million from the health, health insurance to provide adequate staffing levels for public safety and explore other cost-saving methods in the municipal '21 budget. That has been made and seconded. Hearing no further discussion, I'd like to pose a question to the council, and it's gonna be up to the council. We can maybe have that vote afterwards. We have budget deliberations scheduled for tonight, tomorrow, and Wednesday. We have just, in essence, sent over to the, this motion, if carries, sends a budget back to the administration, so essentially, we don't have a budget to discuss in this committee. Is it the will of the council to cancel the rest of the meetings for the remainder of the week and await a revised budget from the administration, by which will leave us to Wednesday, either Friday or Wednesday, depending how quick they can turn a budget around, which will put us in a position where I would ask councilors to email the clerk to ask what specific department heads you would want down for discussion when we do have the budget, instead of inviting all of them to wait through the course of the night. So I think while we have that motion, it's worthy of discussion this evening. Counselor in seat three.
Mr. President, I would ask Ms. Sahadi what your timeframe would be for getting this done, and I don't wanna, well, I'm asking.
I, I don't know. I will work on it as diligently as possible.
We want to give you enough time, obviously, to...
I obviously have to have a conversation with the mayor and determine what he plans on, on doing. I can't speak to him. I don't know that he will agree with that vote. He may bring back the budget exactly as it's currently presented. He may decide that he will fund some of the public safety positions, but not all of them. I don't know. I can't speak for him.
Well, with that said, I think we should, I don't know, go with what my colleagues want to do here, but we certainly should postpone tomorrow night's meeting.
There's a motion on the floor.
And then wait to hear back from Ms. Sahadi with the timeline.
She initiated a call.
Fair enough. Counselor in seat one, Counsel Lekine.
I'll wait for the vote.
I, I find it acceptable because to have the discussion now before the vote...
That's fine. My, my take is not to rush the administration because I think the message has been very loud and clear that we want to see public safety in there, so it's not gonna be an easy task, right? There's gonna be, I mean, if you take the healthcare, that's some of the money, but then you get back to net school spending. I mean, there's still some tweaks that need to take place, and I think the administration should have enough time to, to deal with it. We have a budget until the end of August anyways, right?
We have to have a July budget, so I...
No, no, I know that, but you've...
I mean, September, I'm sorry. I'm not even in the right month. We need a September budget. I'm concerned that we need to have this voted and in place for payroll and/or other expenses September 1.
Like I indicated, what I would suggest to the council is to, you know, I'll be in touch with the administration tomorrow, and I'm sure there are some department heads that councils don't have questions for that we've been, we've invited. So if we do have to schedule a meeting for Friday, Saturday, or Monday, then we're going to have to do that. I'd hate to have a meeting on a Saturday, but if that's what we have to do, that's what we have to do.
I'm not available on Saturday.
Are you saying, are you saying this week?
I'm, I'm saying next week, most likely. So Monday, if the city council wants to send, have a discussion, we'll post the meeting, and councilors will email the clerk and say what department heads they want here specifically that they have questions for with respect to the municipal budget. I think that would be appropriate. I mean, like, I don't know if the, what the council's position is, I'm just speaking out loud. Do we want to have the school department back? Do we need the school department back? We had a huge discussion with them about where they're at and where they're going.
I don't think that makes any sense because if healthcare comes out, then we're short net school spending, right? So then you, it's premature to have the school committee here or the school department here to talk about a budget that may change. I know they voted on a budget tonight, but I would say that the, we should cancel the meetings for this week and start entertaining meetings for next week.
Okay.
That's just my take as one, Counselor. I yield.
Any further discussion? Counselor in seat five, Counsel Lee.
So you're gonna have a discussion with the mayor about this, and you would indicated and indicated that this is going to, if we pass this, if we pass this resolution, that you're going to have to compromise net school spending. So when you have these discussions with the mayor, you're gonna also have Mr. Almeida from the school department as well involved in this conversation as well?
I don't, I don't believe so, Counselor. I believe the mayor was loud and clear that net school spending is gonna be funded at 100%, so...
So this is ultimately coming down...
The cut will have to be someplace else at this particular point.
So it's ultimately coming down between the police department and the school department at this point? That's what it seems like.
Well, if I fund, if, if we cut the insurance, and I'm assuming based on the motion that was just on the table, $1.4 million, that will, and I don't, I don't have it in front of me to give you the exact numbers, but that's gonna affect next, net school spending. And so in order to bring net school, net school spending back to 100%, something else will have to be cut if you're assuming that the whole 1.4 that you're cutting from here is going to public safety.
All right, thank you. I yield.
Thank you.
But that is all, that has to be discussed with the mayor and the chief and potentially other departments.
Counselor in seat four, Counsel Vice President Lebo.
Counsel President, are you keeping...
Counsel President, are you keeping Wednesdays and Thursdays as is for now until you hear from them tomorrow?
I can. We can cancel tomorrow's meeting and just, you know... I know councilors aren't available on Thursday, so Thursday, there's some councilors who have expressed concerns being available Thursday. So we'd have to repol. Pardon?
We already had Thursday scheduled.
If needed, I believe.
But there are councilors that can't be there?
I believe so. We can repol them tomorrow if necessary.
I can't make Thursday.
Okay, there we go.
I think we should vote on the motion.
Motion on the floor, we'll call the question. Return the budget to the mayor with a request for a reduction of $1.4 million for health insurance to provide inadequate staffing levels for public safety and explore other cost-saving measures in the municipal FY '21 budget. Motion has been made and seconded. Hearing no further discussion on that item, roll call.
Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lalabie LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
No.
President Ponti?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I guess we could play by air tomorrow, or do you want to cancel the meetings for the week? What is the...
Motion to cancel the rest of the meetings for this week.
Motion to cancel the remaining scheduled meetings for the rest of the week has been made by Counselor Kadeem, seconded by Counselor Pereira. Discussion, Counselor in seat two, Counselor LeBeau.
My only question is, a week from tomorrow is September 1st.
That's correct.
So...
A week, yeah, but Monday is September 1st, let's see.
Monday is the 31st. Next Tuesday is September 1st.
The 31st is Monday. Next Tuesday is the 1st, yep.
So essentially, what you're saying, we're gonna do three or four nights in one?
We might have to. And like I said, my suggestion to the council, and I'll say it again publicly for everybody to understand...
Would be Saturday, Monday?
If we have to, but it would have to be the city council to send the clerk emails on what department heads they have specific questions for. So we won't have all the department heads here at one time. Usually in this, we have, you know, law, facilities, maintenance, trash, you know. There's a lot of other departments, not to discredit them, that we may not have questions for.
I agree. I just think realistically, I don't know, that you can do it in one, that you would need two anyways.
It might be either a long night, or we'll work it out. I'll work out the details with the mayor and Mrs. Sahadi. But the motion on the floor, I'm sorry, you still have the floor.
I yield.
Any further discussion? There's a motion on the floor to cancel the remaining meetings for the remainder of the week. That has been made by Counselor Kadeem, seconded by Counselor Peckham. Hearing no further discussion, roll call. And I do have the ability, if something crazy happens, to schedule a meeting with everybody available within, what, 48 hours, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. President.
So we have that ability if we need to.
I think we should try to meet this week.
We'll do our best. Motion has been made to cancel the remaining meetings, roll call.
Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lalabie LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn has been made by Counselor Peckham, seconded by Counselor Deion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose the ayes. Have a good night.